Good evening, everyone. Today is July the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. It is now six P M. This is the City Council Budget Workshop for the city of Miller Beach. It's called to order, and now let's do the Plaid Relations. Plaid Relations. United States of America to the Republic which stands on one nation under God invisible with the greatest justice in the world. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Banker. Right. Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Wifler.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Jody Shirley was unable to attend.
Thank you, Patty. We only have one item, one agenda item on this workshop, which is discussion and review of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. I'm going to hand it over to City Mayor Wifler. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I want to just run through some of the changes from the last draft to this one that we talked about in the last budget workshop. Page nine. I say page eight, start with page eight. The rental revenue for the rental registration, we upped that back up from, I think it was at like ten, back up to sixty-two five hundred.
Councilor, where is that from?
Rental registration under license and registration, a halfway down page.
Okay.
Rental property registration. And then on page nine, the following page, for our, for the center rental income, we upped that a little bit more to be accurateable with the actual, I think it was at twenty-four five, and I got it up between the rental weddings and the rental parties up to thirty thousand. And then on page twenty-seven. We stopped saving, stopped the savings plan for the computer hardware and software. Now that I notice it, I'm not going to budget the two thousand five hundred for the next budget either. I think I can reschedule. And then on page fifty-five. Reinsurance has saw its increase this year. The insurance had three thousand and bumped it up to four thousand. Last year was a little over, it shows two years ago, but for the last year's actual was about three thousand three hundred and fifty. So it came up a little bit this year, so I raised the, the, um.
Is that, what does that cover the store?
That covers the general liability, the catalogs and docks and that. Page fifty-eight. That still needs to be changed. I said that we're going to up the savings from the seven thousand five hundred each year to ten thousand to save a little bit more or whatever we need to repair it. So that did not get changed, will it? I can't get that changed. And then I have some items for your consideration based on our last discussion. The first item, and I sent this to you via email, it's on page twelve, so it'll be under the City Council budget. And this would be five eleven, four ninety, this, oh, sorry, five eleven, yeah, four ninety, but it's below my ceiling, it's recording meetings.
What was that, City Council?
City Council budget on page twelve. And then under recording meetings, we currently have a budget of ten thousand dollars. The last two council meetings, you've seen Victor come in and set up something different. We've been just testing and trying on to improve the live video function for people who want to watch the meeting from home, and at the same time tackle the recording services that we already have provided. Victor put together his proposal with an explanation, and it would require us to increase the budget from the ten thousand to the fourteen thousand to cover our current meetings. To be honest, I looked at the, at the statistics from the live YouTube. Right now, we average about four viewers, but they typically watch every meeting. Ideally, it would be, you know, something that we want to attract more people to get involved and watch the meetings, try to make it easier for them to do it from home rather than them coming, you know, like eating dinner or do something else at the same time.
Can you tell how many?
You can tell. You can tell if they watch live, and you can tell if you view the video afterwards.
Right, I understand, but you can tell how many sort of, better watching more.
Yes. Yeah. Right now, what you see on Zoom, if they log in through Zoom, you can see them, if, since we offer the live feed on YouTube, that doesn't require them to sign in or anything, they just click on it and streams it. I think most people prefer that, but statistically, they put together numbers that tell you, you know, how many watched and what the peak, peak viewers were.
Let me ask you, obviously, what we saw on YouTube, we didn't get to see it live. I saw some things change back there on that screen, but I don't think that's what we were broadcasting to YouTube. Is that correct? Or live, we weren't actually sending out what was on that screen live, correct?
If you saw, and I've asked Victor to have clarification, but if you saw the names popping up and the cameras changing.
Where it's edited.
That, but he's doing it all in.
Yeah, we see that on the monitors where the talks were.
Yes.
It would be that go out to the public.
Yes, that is what they're seeing. And then what is, what is becoming the recorded file, what is that actual live stream? So he's using different equipment. He's got that microphone that's picking up things on the floor. And I've heard that there was some background noise, so I, I mean, I would ask him to see if we could dial that in better. But when it comes to it, I mean, I just want to be upfront with, you know, right now, what our viewership is, ideally, we want more. But this just makes it a little bit more watchable if you are going to use the, the option of staying home. It also, from my standpoint, has somebody actually administered in the meeting. So he's sitting over there, you know, troubleshooting if there's any issues. If we have someone presenting on the screen and things seem to be switched around, he can do it as opposed to me getting up and going over. I have no problem doing it, but it does, it does tackle that issue.
And that's something we were looking for, and I definitely didn't like the fact that you were having to do it. So I guess the question is, is it worth the extra four thousand dollars to have better quality recordings and live feeds as well as the labeling and then somebody actually moderating the Zoom meeting? That's, that's the question.
That's the question. It definitely, if you watch it, if you compare it to, I don't know if you watch the older ones where it's just a still cam, it's, it's kind of hard to see anything that's going on.
The only one you, it was hard to even tell. I mean, obviously, you listen to the voice, but if you weren't aware and didn't frequent our meetings, you didn't even tell who was even speaking. So definitely an improvement. Again, I'll ask the council, is it worth four thousand dollars?
So that is one of the big differences that previously, you may or may not see who's actually speaking, whereas with this new approach, he's going to be able to move the camera and like.
So he operates two at once, and yes, he zooms in, he kind of has one on who's talking, and he's got to keep back off that shot, you know, to get to the next person talking. So he's kind of editing while he's, while he's recording. If you notice too, when someone's at the podium, he's got like an angle on them when he's turning.
So we were not doing that previously for the ten thousand?
No, we were not doing that. So he was doing that with other, with the two separate tripod cameras. And then he had to edit it afterwards, and then it was like getting uploaded to YouTube, but just as a video, not as the live feed.
Now, that, the person that was there that night, that was his dad, but was he actually assisting, or was he just there?
He comes and he helps set up, but I don't think there's much involvement with that. I think he built us based on the labor intensity of what he's doing versus, you know, just operating the camera.
When I first saw this up, I thought it was the additional cost was really just focused on that, you know, that was called carom, that naming in the bottom. But if, the key was, I guess what's left unsaid was, it enables you to sit there and do your job. In that case, I'd be in favor, because it takes you out of the tech shooting role and concentrate on the city's business at that point.
Right, and I, I see Victor as, you know, he's very tech savvy, so if some issue does come up that's unexpected or wearing out, he can address it, but I would kind of interrupt.
All right. Councilmember Livingstone.
I think from a professional perspective, it looks, it's a higher quality, and also from historical data, if I can do it, it'd be easier for folks to go back and track things. And then, of course, there's the issue with calm having to get up, so I'm in favor.
Okay. And Mike, the Mayor D B said you're in favor?
Yes. I'm in favor. I think it might be helpful to, once you're comfortable with how everything looks, if we put something on our website, letting people know that we approved this, because maybe something about that may have tried a bunch previously and went out of control with it, so maybe more people will start watching.
Yeah, it's going to nail it, you blasted out to the email.
Mr. Baker. So you're saying we're only getting about four average viewers?
Yes. I feel like we've lost some. I think we started a little bit better when we started doing this all, but I think part is because of the difficulty of watching. Not only that, but subject matter is of great importance. When you have a contentious city council, you got viewers. If you're doing your job, viewership drops.
I, it's like a thousand dollars per viewer.
Well, the key is it enables, before, we'd have Kyle running around checking bikes. Hold on, guys, I gotta go turn off.
I would have a problem trying to see if, you know, it escalates into something. I mean, are we signing a contract, or are we just agreeing that, okay, this is the new rate, and let's move forward?
Well, I mean, I can work that out with Victor if we want to.
This is for your.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, we can.
Are we satisfied? Leslie?
Okay.
I am too. I'd say we go forward with that.
City, what are your changes? There's one that we mentioned, I'm not sure the last working group, about a boat budget or something. Yep, that's on the list. Got it. Thank you. Okay, the next discussion item is page sixteen, and that's in a non-departmental budget. This would be professional services other, which is five nineteen and three ten, top of the operating. And this is going to be a budget increase for the land and development code update. The last, I think it was one of the work sessions that I brought up, the need to update chapters of the code that have not been updated in a while, mainly considering the chapter ten construction code, chapters seventy, yeah, here. Seventy-four floodplain, chapter ninety-four zoning. These are all land development codes. This wouldn't be solely based on those chapters only, that we also incorporate any other code sections that we thought needed to be reviewed. But it was brought up, I think by the Vice Mayor, that if we were to do a code review, it would be best that we have a consultant or planner who has experience in, in the codes today, and so we'll review it and present it in a way that authorities may fully understand the code as opposed to maybe not, not really knowing what they're reading. So I found two consulting groups that are professional planning, and both of them had contracts for municipalities. The better of the two prices I found in a proposal was an increase of thirty thousand dollars. So it is a pricing error to do this, but this would, this would include meetings with the planning zoning board, which is our annual, or open to the public, of course, for like a public workshop of if there's anything else that the public sees and needs to revise. So working at least two meetings with them, making recommendations, explaining those recommendations, and having them approve something to go to the council. And then it would be two, two readings, ordinance drafted by Atlanta, reviewed by our attorney. I did talk to them, and they thought, in their experience, the attorney would just need to review the ordinances that they write, and they never really had any major changes over the attorney. So our legal surrogates, we wouldn't expect any major increases of that. But that, the other range I got was posted at forty thousand dollars. So we were going to do this with a consultant. We didn't, we need to increase our professional services budget at least thirty thousand.
Where does this stand with, with the impact study that's going to be required on us whenever we do ordinance changes?
The planner is fully aware of the requirements for the impact studies, so that is built into the cause. I forgot to mention, they're also going to do the updates to the code for the comp.
You're saying that not only would they draft it, but they would also do the impact study while they're doing the drafting, so that we don't have to pay someone else whenever we approve a new ordinance?
I'll verify that with what I understood the others. They know what their requirements are.
Okay. If that's the case, that's a deal. That's a, that's a good deal. Because having to do a new impact study every time we change something, excuse me, in our, in our code, can get very pricey, and I don't think any of us have the expertise to do that. So it would require outsourcing. I'm, I remember we were looking at the zoning, is this only zoning for right now, or is this the entire code?
This is the entire code, but the sections that I'm focusing on are the building code, chapter ten, chapter seventy-four floodplain management, and then chapter ninety-four zoning. And they're, they're pretty much the most extensive chapters.
Right. Okay. Well, this also fixes our, our problem with swimming pools.
Yes, chapter, chapter ten.
Okay, yes.
A quick list that I kind of, that I gave them, you know, first some list was the height of a swimming pool, that I also, for recommendations of residents and council members to look into, setback, it's a setback requirement for docks, especially when we have exception for pie-shaped lots for, you know, you know, building setback, but also considerations for docks, because that's something that does come up in variance. Chapter ninety-four, two five five, we have a threshold, which is twenty thousand dollars, anything over, you know, required to, to either get the certified appraisal of the structure to compare to the flood code. Twenty thousand dollars was in the early nineties, was that, that was the number set. Now you can, there's a lot of things you can do to your home, if you get over twenty thousand dollars, anyone. That probably does come up. We have nothing on non-structural fill, and that's kind of presented issues from my experience of just in the building, where property levels are ending up as opposed to, we have the ratings that they're doing improperly, but you're also, you're ending up where people's walls are turning into retaining walls and are not really retaining walls. So that's something to look into. I put some regulations for generators. It's kind of a lumped under equipment, but there's maybe some considerations that we actually have some regulations on generators. Another thing I know is we don't have any, we have no, not even in our sign code, because it's saying where a flagpole would be. That's just something that should be in there. One of the, another thing I want to tackle is the whole front setback and hedge issue. I want to come up with something realistic that we can get everybody in conformity from the city. We don't have anything specifying actual clearance over a roadway. We have eight feet height over a sidewalk, but we have nothing that actually talks about
This one's. I'm sorry, just a quick question on page sixteen there, because it just caught my eye. So the non-departmental department, so is that for the salaries, is that for Laura and the new admin person that are considered?
Yes, so that's built in with full time.
Right, so that's the full time and recurring salaries of Laura.
It's the salary of Laura, the executive assistant, and the salary of the admin assistant at full time.
Perfect. Perfect.
And then one more thing I'll just bring up on this, on my list, was what we're seeing now is, instead of just having rentals for the houses in common condominiums, the people are running out amenities on their property, the pools and such. So we will try and get at that. Randy's got a little background.
Yeah, I got a question, I don't know if you'll pursue later on, but it's no mystery that you can almost expect maybe six to seven council members to come. Between elections next year and the turnover prior to January first, I just want to make sure we have enough budget in for professional development for the hotels, everything needed for the foundational education.
We kept our council budget the same for our travel.
Does that handle seven members total for the year?
I think we have seven.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So one year.
Hopefully, they have reelected.
So it was either, so in twenty twenty-two budget, I think that was a four members, or maybe a three member turnover, at least, the actual was thirty-four hundred dollars. We budgeted in that account, you know, nine thousand.
Okay.
So.
There, there's.
We've always had a lot in that account, but we don't really spend it, but it could, we may spend it in that case.
Okay, back to the approving, what he's asking for, the thirty thousand for professional services modifier code. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
If it includes the impact studies, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
If it includes the impact studying.
That's, that's what we're hoping for. Leslie?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, so on same page sixteen, professional services legal, we talked about doing a charter review. I got some numbers back from Randy in his, in his assessment. Long story short, we need at least ten thousand dollars, he predicts, for legal, for doing the charter review. He presents a lot of elements that, you know, if there's, you know, residents that, you know, bring challenge and involves more legal research and explanation, then it could be a little bit more, I think a safe budget number would be fifteen thousand, with the expectation we stay under for sure.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. But I think, just to be safe, because you never know, I mean, if we were to.
I can hear some changes.
Yeah. What do we require every ten years to do a charter review? It would be cool. I can definitely check that.
If we were pursuing charter review purely on various such as extending the number of terms.
Yeah, but my question was, how often do you have to do it?
I want to say five.
Just what I thought we, we had said was five, we just did one, what, three?
Two years, three years.
Three?
I was on it, yeah.
So why do you submit, so we have to do another one two years?
Yeah, I think some, I mean, there's also potential ways for salaries for city council members, removing term limits or at least succeeding from two to three, and extend the terms, all kind of being driven by that Form six.
I think the salaries doesn't fall under the charter.
Okay.
It's already in the charter, you have to accommodate that. My question is, if you're only doing a partial, you're going to have to do another one in two years. So why should I put two thousand and do one now? I think he's raising the question because after next week's meeting, we may decide that there is a need to modify the charter, and we'll see how that may pan out.
And again, budget, just a number.
Budget for it, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
And this estimate is part of the full charter, so.
It is for the charter.
Yes, yes, I mean, it's the seventeen pages. I'm in calculations hours.
How do we have to do it? Just here.
All right, did you have any other items?
So we're, we're gonna put this in the.
Everybody okay with that?
Okay. And I'll find out the years. Page twenty is to hand out the maintenance worker two. That would be our lowest position in public works, which you asked if we were to consider adding an additional worker to the public works department, what that cost would look like. What I did is I just broke it out, each personnel service line item for that one worker, which would be the maintenance worker two. And then I also showed, as you know, with the stormwater fund, that's fifty percent is, is set for stormwater funds. You're only seeing eighty-five percent of the salary in the public works budget, so I just laid it out like this, because you don't see that in our typical budget.
Now, that, that amount is already included on page twenty that I'm looking at.
That is, that was put in the budget.
Right.
I thought it was best of sticking in there and break it out so you could see how it
Just a general question while everybody's thinking about that, Kyle. So in the previous world I lived in, you know, we would have line item flexibility. So you could overspend and underspend within line items. Then it got to a different level. Like in our world here, it might be like, within the public works department.
Yes.
You know, you, you could move line items, again, overspend, underspend, but at the end of the day, when the year ended, you could not exceed, I'm just taking this as an example, the total budget for public works.
In year.
For that particular year.
Yes.
So how do we do it here?
That's exactly how we do it.
Okay.
We, you can, as long as you stay within the departmental budget.
Perfect.
You're good, as long as you meet that bottom line.
I have no questions about that. Anyone else?
No.
Are you okay with it?
I brought this up at the Audit Committee meeting. We are, it is getting tougher for all cities in this area to, to obtain and retain employees, especially because of cost of living. So my, if this doesn't work, or we struggle actually finding a good quality third person, the next thing I would look into would be providing relief by contracting out some services of the landscape. But I just wanted to.
I do want to.
Yeah, obviously, and I think this is the best, the best route out.
This is basically in response to losing you, is that correct? You moving out to the city manager position, and we basically lost.
No, that, that is not, the, the reason behind this is that, that we constantly feel that we have, we're getting by with our managers, we could provide better service. The idea is that, right now, our employees, when we have to struggle to take time off. The idea is that write out our employees when we have to struggle to take time off. Right now, if they do, it's, it's kind of like a scramble. Things get behind. Whenever we take on a special project, things get behind. This is, in my mind, if we had another person, there would be no problem keeping busy, provide, provide better service.
But I, I also think that you were able to assess often where now you're really too busy doing that. So it, it makes sense to me. I, I don't really have a problem. Comments?
I'm just ready, yeah. As you, I just have a quick question on the timeline. So this is approved, and as the budget is being approved and going along, when can you actually start advertising?
October first.
So we couldn't advertise before that? So when the budget is available October first, we could be ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, yeah, there's no issues from the, you know, first regular meeting, first having. Right, yeah.
That'd be a recommendation. And maybe we could, you know, whatsoever, hopefully we'll find a great candidate. And at that point, you can tell them when the starting date is ten one, because that's when the money's available.
Thirty-seven thousand is an awful low figure. What's this, what's this saying? Skilled labor is a cheap, cheap labor is skilled. I don't know what you're gonna, what you're gonna get for less than eight hundred dollars a month a week. It's heavy, no?
We've got somebody now. Like I said, it's a struggle to find a lot of people. It's very hard for someone to live on that wage.
Yeah, I can imagine. I think it should grow up. I'm probably, I think we need another maintenance guy, all part of it. They're on the pay, they're doing well on the pay.
Do we know of, just an estimate of what some of the other towns, if any, run speech, for example, where they pay for their.
And the Oaxas as well, we're, yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
My, my recommendation would be to follow the city manager's recommendation. If it doesn't work out, he can come back for a.
Yeah.
Budget coming in.
I, I know from city manager meetings that all the municipalities are struggling to hire their staff. They can't fill these positions.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks for doing your.
All right, and the last I have is the, it's gonna be page thirty-three. So I found a small patrol boat, it's a twenty-one foot. It's one of the inflatable halls. It's, it was found on a GSA building contract. A lot of police departments.
Yeah, it was a two-rib.
Bridgette Flippel.
Yep.
It, I found it on the contract that is good until twenty twenty-eight. I put in the budget for a hundred thousand. The actual boat price I got this month was eighty-one thousand. That's for the boat trailer.
But we're also, you know, it's obviously expensive and there's any additional insurance on your oil maintenance that.
And I, I think anyone who operates, there needs to be public safety training for the staff. And I, and the way I'd see this, the primaries are within the community services administration. But which ones?
So if we approve this, what do we get for our money? What, how often would, would the, all of the sea walls and docks in the area be controlled? Because you're probably more than maintenance. You're probably wanting to know the condition of the community. Obviously, it's gonna help with, with certain items, especially whenever it comes to the, the drainage. Get to do inspections there, but I just don't want to buy it and then it just stays there.
No, I, I would expect at least them every two weeks it gets used, but, you know, weekly basis.
Do we ever look at, I think there's a place in Dunny, you can rent, it's like five hundred dollars a month, your guarantee of boat. I want to clarify, boat club.
Good.
And you're ready. And you get the keys, you turn the keys back in, tow it up, goodbye, there's no maintenance.
I think it wouldn't be too much. I'd love like.
Yeah. Because I've been out of the, yeah, here's the short.
We, you, you come and map where your guaranteed boat.
Guaranteed.
As you take specific.
You're talking the Freedom Boat Club?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I, I have a feeling that they would shut Kyle down immediately if they found out it was for official reasons. I, I just have a feeling that they will say no. But it doesn't hurt to ask.
Is that the one you're talking about, three percent?
I don't know what it's called. It's a clear water cross a bridge, it's a simple left.
I believe it's the biggest one that I think that.
There's fuel.
Six point down by John's past. I think that the disadvantage to having a service like that, and I'm not, not opposed to saving money at all for, for leasing or, or not leasing, but renting boats, it's the certain services to get a deal, you join the club, and then kind of have to do a reservation in advance. Well, what good does that do you if you have an emergency and you need to go check something? So.
Can we use a sheriff if you have an emergency or fire department?
I, I don't know. I, I.
Be that one with the pier. It's like, it'd be nice to have a boat out there to pull off that climbing that's floating.
That's what we have Kyle for.
Yeah, exactly. Get your woods.
Get your woods.
Do you need a couple of them?
So this is, so that included those in water as well?
Yes, it's a motor and a trailer.
So explain to me how this, how this works. I see twenty thousand dollars for the next five years. When would you get your?
Well, that's, so I budgeted out because with the last workshop we set the savings plan. When I was talking to the vice mayor today, she's, after meeting with the audit committee, was a support boat. She is in support of, like, well, she's wants it to be considered purchasing this budget year.
So you'd be basically, you're, you're taking an internal loan. Buy it now and then every month, every, every year for the next five years, you're gonna quit twenty thousand dollars of the budget.
You're looking at, we would have to cut the budget. Well, really, we just, we just purchase it. We budgeted it all, this company budgeted, we purchased it.
Do we have that?
Yes.
We had the money budgeted for a year.
January. This is a, a good option.
No, not anymore. Greg has boat.
The chair of the audit committee, Ron Zanich, he, something he does with his business, he has experience with those boats, so he's looking into it and pricing. They do repair on those.
Now, getting out the GSA, you just have to, you know, ask it, versus coming from, you know, departmental security, which one, you know, I don't want it. Our emergencies.
Yeah, it's, it's new purchase.
Sometimes they sell them off the, the used GSA site.
This is quoted from somewhere for, I think, down south, new, off of that contract.
Okay.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but the one that you pulled up for you on the dock.
We're not getting that one, right?
I'm not asking you to sell like it. I'm just saying, can I get a price on there? Wouldn't that be something that?
That one is only, that's a, I believe it's a four hundred or twelve footer.
Right.
And powered by a twenty horsepower engine.
See, I like the other idea, the mobile human boats, you part of the RV for that.
Yeah. Anyway, I think the total price tag on that one is around fifteen thousand.
That's right.
That's the funny stuff? I don't know. Is it a one man or two man operation and are you going to be carrying tools with you?
Definitely want something we can carry the, the tools with us and be able to move. Piece of weight. I forgot what the capacity, I think it was eight passengers on that, but, but it gets to the weight capacity.
That includes fuel, motor.
I would recommend what I have for anything separate.
But we're, yeah, what you're doing is, but it's not a private boat.
And it's not, it's underpowered. So you put something heavy and another person on there, it's, I mean, it'll get you there, but I, I wouldn't recommend it for a professional, let's take care of the community.
Whereas you can use them to really do a lot of those.
I can also tell you, if you're getting a twenty-one footer, what, what, what kind of engine is on it?
You have a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, a hundred.
One, one fifty.
Right. They, the inflatables are probably the most expensive out of all of them, but they're also the most versatile.
For shallow water.
Yeah. Shallow water and just forget the main, shallow water, it's much easier. Plus, if you bump up against something, you're not damaging it.
You get built in front of you.
I don't know. Let's, let's just go around the room. Frankly, I think we should afford a rental option. I think you said, say, a hundred thousand dollars. That kind of money we spent more wisely than I think. Leslie?
I would be in favor of purchase.
Melinda?
I would be in favor with a timeline included for the responsible individual, just like you have on your HVAC checks, et cetera. Hey, you're gonna go out, initiate your emergencies, of course, but you're gonna go out twice a week and they check off and sign on whatever they've gone off. I think that having an understood timeline for rounds is very important. We're gonna be curious to find this.
All right.
Yeah, I do agree with, you know, go out checks, think you can do this over rounds or anything like this. But I agree with the boat. I would just ask if we do do that, we really do need a savings. A lot of people may think this is a fun thing, nice to have, but it just really is a strong justification, but based on, as soon as, yes, we will be doing it every two weeks. It's exactly what we are doing when we go out. And it will be on there, whether it's a new or it's a slower.
Lauren? So the funding is approved, Kyle. So how does, how does the timeline work? So if we approve this at twenty thousand a year for five years, when you actually get the boat?
So if we approve it this way, we're not getting the boat or at least sold. Well, at, at any point, you can have a savings plan for something at any point. You can say, let's just purchase it now and put the extra in at the council. That's our wishes. What the vice mayor wanted to consider is that we do it sooner or later. I mean, I could put it in the budget for thirty thousand in the next two years.
That's what I would be in favor of. I don't even want to wait, wait nine years. It's just too far down the road, so. If we think it's a good idea and it's justified, then, you know, I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of getting it right away, whatever funding sources we would need.
All right, how about the generator money? How much did we have saved?
Three hundred and two hundred and fifty.
And how much of that have we spent?
We didn't buy a generator.
What's that?
We, we did not buy a generator, so we didn't announce.
So you still have that money, is that correct?
That just got put right back into the.
Back into the general fund?
Yeah, I like it.
All right. I, I, I don't want spending that kind of money. But on the other hand, I've, I've been complaining about not having this service as far as Mr. Zabel's concerns and also Livestock's concerns about usage and being careful and things like that. I believe that if we do this, I want it striped up, that it says Miller Beach all over it, City Hall, whatever. Even if it's your name all over it, so that whenever that boat is seen, everyone knows that we're actually doing our job and examining the city and making sure that we're healthy as a city and that we're, we're keeping a close eye on things for years. Too much has been allowed to happen on our, on our water. And also, I think it would give us the opportunity to go right over, circle around these boats that are always in the water. And if we think that there's a problem and we don't know what to do, we can call a, a, a higher authority and have them come check it out also. And maybe that will, that will stop some of, some of that from happening. So I, I, I would agree with vice mayor Shirley. Yes, I would be more than happy to move forward on that.
I brought this up in the audit committee. That island, that party island out there, that is actually ours.
Yes.
We could actually, we could, you know, enforce the rules on there finally.
That's a wedding site. You're sound appreciative.
There's tables, there's lined up weird things out there. I've been out there once trying to, there was a political flag that somebody didn't like, but I had to take down both flags because the attorney recommended that.
You definitely get the street. There's a party going on on that island. I'm gonna go check it out.
I just like, they're like, put the civilian out there, there's your wedding on a desert island. Here's, here's that one boat. Bridge cleanup just passed Saturday. A resident has a boat, says, that boat right there is going there for two years, two years. And I said, does it move? He says, I think it moves every once in a while, but it could be a anchor movement. But he has never seen anybody on it. Like, how long? And it's, you can just see it's deteriorating, the bridge. How long do you have to?
Yeah, somehow they get marked as dead and then eventually the county will come along and do something about it, but.
I don't need it more. If we, if we feel that it, it can't function, like, it's not adequate, well, they get the county will come and check it out, make a passive test. So if you really think that it, it can't operate.
Oh, he said, does it have a village pump or something there?
It's just all depends on whether inhabitants are on it. There's all these reasons why, why you can, why you can report them, but there's also more reasons why you can't.
I remember what he was saying, you know, to remove is another big.
All right. All right, so let's go back. Everyone's somewhat approved. You're, you're okay, you're okay. You're wanting to check out the rail services. Would you please do that anyway? And if we can, if, if that service is out there and it's really available, it's something to consider, but going back to inconvenience, if there's an emergency, you're gonna have to go get it. You're gonna have to rent it. You're gonna have to sign the paperwork. You're gonna have to drive it up the street.
If any, if there's a real, like, like, say, emergency, you know, we got the sheriff. But if there's definitely an urgent issue, I'd worry that's debris in the water, so that it needs to be checked out, then, yeah, that would be and, and you got the timeline, but I'll look into it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that particular topic? I think for the most part, we're, we're leaning towards yes.
All right, I get that answer. That is all I have.
All right, council, do anyone have any other changes on page, questions, comments, recommended changes about this budget?
When our insurance, you were running at, what was the seventy?
Oh.
Thank you for the money. I think it was Friday afternoon, the insurance representative from the round of round that I was getting the quotes from, he came by person to tell me that he could not offer a quote anywhere near what we're currently getting from Florida League Cities. Florida League Cities F O nineteen, especially for. Reasons being our, our lawsuits we've had in the last five years. They just, they've seen the activity and the cases we got going on, and they just can't quote anything near it. They did say, you know, if we can tell a different story, you know, in the next couple of years, come back around, you know, things kind of clean up and, and the law, so forth.
You know, also, aren't we, don't we get the luxury of a group rate because of all the cities are combined? It's, it's self-funded insurance by Florida League, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to go, um, I think other cities do get decent quotes with, with Brown and Brown, but given our situation, they look at us, you know, they kind of give a mystery of all our claims.
Okay. I can answer your question, Mr. Baker. Any other comments or, uh, all right, well, um, everybody okay with this budget?
Yes.
Everybody feel good about it? Sounds like the council agrees, and um, that's what I'm going to go on in the next meeting. All right, good deal, you did a great job.
Thank you. Um, should I make a motion to adjourn or?
Actually, before we do that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, but not immediately. What I'm going to do is ask for a motion to adjourn, uh, for ten minutes. And then, uh, in ten minutes after we do adjourn, we have the military meetings. So now, Mr. Zabel, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Congratulations for being Mr. Baker. Second. All in favor?
Just one more. Why do you, why do you want shots?